Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone on this hot, steamy night. I'd like to call the roll.
Karen Hawks will be excused and so will Cindy Mitchell. We expect a lot from you.
Great, thank you. Moving on to the agenda, approval of minutes of the previous meeting of July 6th.
Will we approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
First, second, and any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed or any abstentions? Okay, adjustments to agenda.
We have one adjustment this evening. I'm going to put under my report as the first item after the reading that Principal Larson's going to do a presentation as a follow-up from the Ed Committee this evening on proficiency-based diplomas. That's all we have.
Okay, thank you. Time in the agenda where we typically ask anyone who's interested in addressing the board, please step to the podium, state your name, and make your comments.
Hi, my name is Sarah Novak, and I missed the last board meeting, I apologize if this was spoken about or to whatever. The incident of the last two days of school with the flag, I was wondering if that's been resolved so I don't have to worry about that for the following school year.
So, we did talk about it, though we, I, please correct me if I misstate this, simply we were looking into making sure policy addresses issues related to school grounds, particularly in the parking lot, and that's an issue that still will be on our agenda going forward.
We also have the second reading of our student dress policy tonight, that incorporates some of the theme as well. There's Principal Larson. Lee, do you want to respond to that? I know you had numerous conversations with numerous personnel, our school resource officer, et cetera. Do you want to follow up on that, Lee, from your perspective?
I think really one of the things that we, the administrative team here, spent a lot of time looking at was what our policies, school districts that we had, probably was going to address and what was not. And the biggest issue to us is when it starts to impact education, environment for our kids, that's when we have to bring to the board attention just certainly what we did. In fact, Miss Novak, was one of the conversations that I had at the end of this period, so hopefully things are worth it, we'll make sure that gets addressed.
I also wanted, I had sent you an email, Mr. Parker, about that, CISV.
Sure.
It's an awesome organization if you're not involved. We just, it's trying to bring kids from all different countries together to talk about peace, and I always forget to realize, oh, Allen, Doris Twitchell Allen, from Maine, started it after World War II to try to bring kids together for peace so that they don't grow up and won't war, that they actually remember people that they met in other countries and think, wow, I have a connection. So, Maine hosted ten different countries with fifteen-year-olds this past three-week period, and Brewer High School, or Brewer Middle School was where the site was that they were at. And in the future, it would be awesome if we could do something with Hamden because this was an opportunity of a lifetime. We had the Spanish students at our home, five of them, which I expected too. It was awesome. We also have Belgium and Amsterdam, and it was just to see these kids go from being just fifteen-year-olds who come from their own country worried about shopping, to kids who actually care about each other, and in two years Maine will be hosting eleven-year-olds. So, just an idea, thought from maybe Hamden getting involved, our community to say, hey, we know this is awesome and we want to work with it as well, so, just a little thought before it happens.
Sorry, I did just get an email about an hour ago from somebody at CISV, so I haven't had a chance to really read it yet, but I will.
Well, it'd be a great thing, we love it, but anyway, thank you.
Does CISV still do the exchange programs? When I was fifteen, I went to Germany. I didn't, I never did the summer village, but I went to Germany through CISV. It's a great program.
It is awesome, and it was just an, it was humbling, meeting with kids from other countries who knew so much about our politics, and it made me feel very embarrassed and humiliated that I did not know as much about theirs. And some of the things that are happening in our country right now, they were just appalled and they kept asking questions, and I'm thinking, okay, this is just not a good time to be here, but hopefully, you know, by the time the eleven-year-olds come, we got it together. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments tonight? Seeing none, moving forward with the agenda. A reminder that our annual board gathering is tomorrow night at the Frank's House. Any further need to know information, or yeah, time?
What did we say, six? Five o'clock, five thirty? I think, I think the public time is five thirty.
Five thirty works.
The agenda's, yeah, it's five thirty.
Yeah.
And the, the only coordination is just desserts and salads, the after, covered and bring whatever you want to grill, and we have the fresh meats.
Great.
All within the focal length, it's amazing.
So, one other issue, I wanted to just remind people, as per our policy, we will be putting people to various committees after the November meeting election, but it's a great time for newer board members to sit in on any and all committees that they're interested in potentially, and to share with us any areas that you might be interested in exploring and ultimately sitting on that committee. It'd be great to have that information. I've had some feedback so far, it'd be great, it's great to have others. And I think we're pretty close on mentors for the three newest members.
Yes.
So, I got your email, and then we'll talk about that one, but, thank you. Okay, personnel.
Under personnel, we have one resignation I'd like to read to you tonight to inform all people, including obviously the public, is to me from Emil Janest, our Assistant Superintendent, letter of retirement. The purpose of this memo is to officially notify you that I'll be retiring on November 1, 2017, from my position as Assistant Superintendent for Business. As we previously discussed, this notification will provide you and the RSC 22 Board Directors ample time to begin the process of transitioning to a new Assistant Superintendent. So, for the benefit of everyone to know, that will mean that Emil will have served twenty-four years here. And our position, Emil and I, as we're currently looking at the job description to make some modifications and adaptations, I would anticipate probably latter part of October, first of November, publicizing the vacancy, and Niles and I'll talk, and we'll look to, or at least I'll recommend to Niles that we look to involve two or three, or maybe four, board members on the interview team with me. And the target would be to have Emil's replacement selected probably around March or April, with the person to come on board around the first of June to work with Emil for about a month, because Emil's last day in the office will be June 30th, as he'll be using his accrued unused vacation time to segue as to his retirement. Any questions of board members? If you're interested, matter of fact, what I'll do is I'll send you all the job description, and you might want to take a look at it and offer any suggestions, because we, Emil and I do have some ideas to address some of the things that we have not met as far as targets, such as naming rights, for example, better working relationship with Ed Foundation and so on. But this will be a very pivotal position for this school district. I think, if I'm not mistaken, Emil's the longest-tenured assistant in the state of Maine, so, congratulations to Emil, very well deserved, and we'll see that.
Emil, not as far, we've talked about it already, but very grateful for your consideration in terms of when you notified us, and we're looking forward to working with you throughout the year, so.
Thank you, Niles. Yep. This will be, this will be a big responsibility for the people that join me on this interview committee. This will be a major decision we'll make here in the next five or six months. Okay, with that, we do have a number of nominations this evening, so if you would reference your agenda notes, the first one that I'd recommend to you tonight is our occupational therapist district-wide is Kimberly Akerson. You can see Kimberly's degree, extensive experience, her salary $34,007.36. Our occupational therapist in district-wide is Kimberly Akerson, is my recommendation.
Okay, I'd like to motion please to approve. I move that we approve Kimberly Akerson as the occupational therapist for this.
Second. Questions, comments? All in favor?
Okay, where's Kimberly? Is she here? Lynn, I saw Lynn come in, right? Is Lynn here? She wasn't, sorry, I knew I had one person come, so Kim was unable to attend. Next recommendation for the Board of Directors, grade three teacher, Weatherby Schools, Erin Adams, BS at St. Joe's College, educational technician, been a substitute teacher also. You can see in other states. Her salary per the prescribed collective bargaining contract, $32,400. Grade three teacher, Weatherby Schools, Erin Adams.
Move that nomination. Thank you. We've got a motion, I have a second. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Okay, Erin, congratulations and welcome. There she is, right there, right in front of her. Special ed teacher at McGraw School, Andrea Bosino. You can see Andrea has a CES, that stands for Certificate Advanced Study. Masters and DS also, University of Maine, quite extensive experience in various schools in the greater Angkor area. Her salary with that experience plus advanced degrees, $42,405. Andrea Bosino, Special Ed Teacher at McGraw School.
Move that we approve Andrea Bosino as a Special Ed Teacher from McGraw School.
Second. Thank you. Second, any comments or questions? All in favor?
Okay, Andrea, there she is, right there, congratulations Andrea, welcome. Now we move to Hamden Academy, also a special education teacher with a BA in Liberal Arts, two years substitute experience in the Meselonsky School District, Crystal Davidson. Her salary with that experience and degree is $32,400. Crystal Davidson, Special Education Teacher right here at Hamden Academy.
Move the motion. Second. Move on second. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Okay, Crystal, congratulations, right up. You can see one of the themes here tonight is that of special education teachers, as you can obviously witness. Next, we move to the Weatherby School, Danell Farrell, BS Elementary in Risley and Farmington, graduate level coursework as well, extensive experience in the Rhode Island area, you can see there with, what, twenty-six years, plus or minus approximately. Salary is $61,085 with that extensive experience and BS degree, Special Ed Teacher at Weatherby, Danell Farrell.
Second. Thank you. Comments? All in favor?
Okay, Danell, congratulations and welcome, right up. English teacher here at Hamden Academy, Michael Alime, BA in English and minor in Communications in Manchester, student teaching experience in Connecticut, six months teaching assistant also in Connecticut, looking obviously to move to the area. Annual salary per the prescribed collective bargaining contract, $32,400. Michael Alime, English teacher here at Hamden Academy.
Move that we approve Michael Alime as an English teacher at Hamden Academy.
Second. Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Not all in favor?
Okay, where's Michael? I saw him, and there he is, right up there. Michael, congratulations, stand right up. Stand up, Michael, so everyone can see you, sir. Play, there you go. Put a name to a face. Thank you, Michael. Okay, we have a lady moving south from East Millenaki, you can see had eleven years' experience, up there, guidance counselor at the Wagner Middle School, Charlotte Lowell. You can see Charlotte Lowell has a master's degree and BA from University of Maine, also has adjunct professor experience at Eastern Maine Community College, also at Levitt High School and Turner. My recommendation for your endorsement, like the Wagner Middle School Guidance Counselor, Charlotte Lowell.
Second. Questions? If not all, in favor?
Okay, where's Charlotte? There she is, right there. Congratulations. Brooke Swanson, .6 Occupational Therapist. Is Brooke here? Yes, she emailed me, okay, I'm glad she's here. Brooke has a master's in occupational therapy from Hussin University, BS in Psychology also from Hussin, and you can see has three years' experience, and the second page also experience in the greater Angkor area and also Rochester, New Hampshire. So, the second occupational therapist, this one at .6, based on that part-time status for Brooke, her salary $21,485. My recommendation for your endorsement, Brooke Swanson, Occupational Therapist at .6.
Move that we approve Brooke Swanson as Occupational Therapist, .6, full-time equipment senior.
Second. Thank you. Any questions? And again, all in favor?
Okay, Brooke, thank you very much for coming, congratulations. Those are all my recommendations this evening. As you can see, the flavor of this and previous meetings, we've had a pretty extensive hiring this summer. I usually don't like to give round numbers, but I'm going to anyway, so these aren't going to be a hundred percent accurate, but traditionally we hire about seventeen or eighteen teachers in the summer. We're pushing right around thirty this summer. You, well, I'm getting ahead of myself, but you read the teacher exit survey, as you can see, most of people are doing retirement, spousal relocation. I did receive one Special Ed Teacher resignation today from McGraw School. She's leaving, she's getting married, and she's moving to central Maine, so we'll be looking for Kimberly, we're, you know, okay, we have a nice Special Ed Teacher that we'll be looking to replace as well, so Kristin Briggs will be busy at that. So you can see, obviously, our principals are very busy with their respective interview committees this summer as well. Okay, are all our slots full? Do we have teachers for every grade, or do we have any long-term subs? Well, let's take a look at it. Mrs. Moore, you're all set for teachers, correct? That's Smith. And this is Boone.
Weatherby's all set.
Weatherby's all set. And this is Briggs. You have two long-term subs, but we're all set, I think, with the long-term subs. We have, we have two maternity leads, right?
And I have just one special.
And one Special Ed, so we're all set there. Regan, is Regan here? There's Regan. Regan, are you all set for faculty? Oh, great. Richard?
All set.
All set. Lee?
We're all set, with the contingency of those folks who are waiting for specific discipline from the OLE.
I'm glad you brought that up, Lee. So yes, Tony, we're all set. I think I might have mentioned this to the board before, we are finding with a lot of new hires right out of colleges, that they don't have their certification endorsed by the Department of Education yet because of the turnaround time. And usually what happens is because the University of Maine does not give the official transcript until a couple, three weeks after graduation, that sets them behind. So here's the slight dilemma. I cannot put them on their collective bargaining contract if they're not certified, so I carry them as a long-term sub, and that happens maybe once or twice, so hopefully that's good news. The most important thing those people need to have is their fingerprinting, and the good news is all of them have their fingerprinting right now. So hopefully come August 30th, they'll have their certifications and in my office, and they'll be on their salary schedule according to the contract. So we're in pretty good shape with that significant turnover this summer, and the principals have worked hard to bring those people to us. Okay? Okay, under the superintendent's report, reading they sent you behavior and outcomes proclamation this evening is Allen.
Okay, good.
Okay, all right, second.
Education enables all students to learn the skills, acquire the knowledge, and develop the attitudes necessary for them to reach their potential as citizens who can meet the challenges of a changing global society. We believe that all citizens in our communities share the responsibility to educate our children and themselves. Our schools are community support systems and should welcome and encourage all members of our communities to participate, and our schools will have a supportive and empowering atmosphere for all students and community members.
Thank you, Allen. So, relevant to the adjustment to the agenda, the backdrop to Mrs. Larson's, no, I'm actually sorry, Lee changed her name, she informed the Ed Committee tightly, right? Can you inform the full board, Lee?
Sure. I got married two weeks ago, so my last name is M A G N A N.
So, the backdrop to Lee's presentation coming up, the Ed Committee has discussed extensively our movement toward the proficiency-based diploma. Lee's going to do a presentation, and Amanda's going to bring us back to give us a conversation that the Ed Committee's had, and ultimately a recommendation that we're looking for the board to endorse this evening. So, Lee, if you would, please. I believe all board members have the PowerPoint that you're going to be presenting.
They do, and I wanted to print a hard copy today, but some things have been going on with printers and IT, or in other parts of the district, so I apologize.
This, this. Can you help, Mr. Hills?
Let's try, let's try. No, I don't think this will fit very well.
Joel gave you a special one.
That would be helpful, let me grab my notes. Okay, so, I'm going to present from the corner so that I can move things forward, but before I do that, I wanted to also welcome one of Hamden Academy's teachers and department chairs, Mr. Joel Hills, who's standing behind you over there, and he is going to provide some concrete examples tonight as we go through proficiency-based education, which just makes it more realistic for the board and the folks in the audience as well. There's been a lot of work done here over the last two years by teachers, by support staff, by other administrators that are in the audience, as well as our curriculum coordinator, and my job tonight is to really give you a bird's eye view at proficiency-based education, and I want to thank all those players because it's been a lot of hard work to get to this point. So, thank you, Ed Committee, for having me present a couple of weeks ago and asking me to come tonight and present, so, without further ado. Okay. So, tonight's presentation, I really tried to keep it focused on a few things because it could be very overwhelming very quickly. So we're going to talk a little bit about where we've been as a school, where we currently are, and where we need to be headed. There are four guiding points to ponder that really took the high school through the journey to develop the systems for PBE, and those will be reflected throughout the presentation, so again, another layer of our focus. We needed to first prioritize what we wanted the students to be able to know and do in order to create a system of PBE, we have to start there. We also needed to talk about as a school, very articulate ways to know how our kids are learning, what we expect them to learn, right? If you don't monitor, you have no way of knowing what you're doing if it's working. Then what happens if they don't learn it? What are we going to do? And what do we do if they already know it? You'll see these very questions come up throughout the presentation so that you can stay focused on those cornerstones of developing a system like this. And these, if you've dabbled in education, you may have heard of the terminology RTI. Folks in education actively definitely know about it, and those four points to ponder come out of the RTI system very articulately. Over the last two years, you need to know a little bit about where we've been and what our data shows so that you know what I'm asking of the board tonight in support. So we started with the guiding question, what do we expect our students to know and be able to do? The first step in creating that process was as a district, we created standards which were based on content curriculum. We had to articulate specific objectives that we wanted our kids to know and be able to do within every area of the content. Then we had to develop department and school-wide systems of assessment, both formative and summative. So, formative, informal, just checking for understandings, are they learning what I'm teaching today, or do I need to go back and reteach? Formative. And then your summative would be your summary. Did they learn this unit? Did they learn this complete standard? Are they proficient? Okay? Please stop me if you have questions along the way. I tried to keep this from being as jargony as possible, but reality is sometimes it just finds its way in there, so just ask if things come up. Examples of when the critical work occurs, another piece that the board needs to be really aware of is the layers that folks in education are responsible to complete, and we have to find the time and we have to protect the time to accomplish these goals, so I wanted you to know when this work happens. In-service time, department meetings, here at Hamden Academy, departments had meetings once a month, and that's a lot of what was driving their focus. Teachers prep time, they work with other teachers that teach like-minded classes to hone in on some of these very things that we're talking about being able to articulate. Before and after school, teachers are here before the bell and teachers are here after the bell, and sometimes that's all the time they have in their day, and they do work to make sure that they're meeting those needs. And, we use the guiding question, how will they know kids have learned the standards that we just created? Okay? How do we know that it's accomplishing the goal? So departments also analyzed common assessment data to determine the needs of the kids. Are they learning it? And if not, what are they needing from us? What is that information telling us about our kids and what their needs are when they're learning in our classrooms? Are they progressing? And are we providing quality instruction? Is it a student piece? Is it a teacher piece? Okay? And analyzing data tells us many different things in both of those realms, and sometimes realms we're not even expecting. We also developed processes and databases to record both traditional and standard scores. So we've not left As, Bs, Cs, Ds, Fs, we've added to that, ones, twos, threes, and fours. And our system, we use Power School here at the high school, our system wasn't ready for that, so our teachers had to create that. Our IT department had to create that very database to record all of this information. All of this has been done in less than two years. Examples of what step four has included, the framework to determine what and when we would measure. How often are we going to assess our kids? How many hits does a standard get before we say a student's proficient? What is that going to look like so that we can be consistent? Professional development on standard scoring, what does the language really mean? How do, how do we operate consistently as a staff? And the database development that I was just sharing with you a few minutes ago, I was talking to our IT director on Monday, and I wasn't in the district at that time, but he said, Lee, Power School was nowhere near being ready for standards as part of their system, and so we really had to even create the system to hold all of those stats in. We also had to design report cards to demonstrate both forms of measurement. Step five was screening of the assessment data to determine the needs in moving forward with PBE. That's not something as a school that you're going to be able to analyze year one, you're going to need a comparative of years so that longitudinally you can look at the data and figure out what the trends are and what the adjustments are that need to be made, either in your offerings, either in your professional development for teachers, or either in the needs of the kids and how they come up to us. And we've done that. Twenty-four thousand rows of data I analyzed over a forty-hour period the first week kids were gone. If you were part of the Ed Committee meeting, not tonight, but the previous meeting, this data is repetitive from that, so I'm going to bring it all up and then open it for questions if you have any on this. But basically, I looked at the trajectory of freshmen last year who were sophomores this year, and what, what students were both freshmen and sophomore that needed to recover from each of those two years. I analyzed, I had concerns initially that didn't come to fruition, but I analyzed the number of kids with IEPs that still needed to recover standards, and part of that was because the state has yet to determine and give us articulated guidance on how PBE impacts kids with IEPs and 504s. So we needed to know as a school how that impacts our kids, because current we have two-hundred-and-eight kids as of the end of the fifteen, sixteen school year that fall into that category. Out of seven-hundred-and-seventeen, we had two-hundred-and-eight. We can't leave it unaddressed. So that's why I focus on that data. Do you have questions before I move on to that slide, or do you want to save them for the end if you do? We also needed to know the answer to this guiding question, what do we do if they don't learn it? Which means, further work on RTI continues, which will help us in analyzing and addressing systemics, concerns for students' academics and behavioral needs. This work has included lots of work on differentiated instruction, and that won't slow down. As we learn more about the needs of our kids, that tells us what strategies we need to work on. Assessments used to progress, monitor, and guide instruction, departments are crying for time that's protected here for them to Departments are crying for time that's protected here for them to continue that work. They're guiding that. Standards-based core curriculum. Professional development. And comprehensive mental health supports. And I put that one in because over the second semester, and you were privy to some of those conversations as well, we have seen our advanced learners who are very involved in extracurricular activities continue to need mental health supports, which is a phenomenon that is new. And it's gotten board attention. It's gotten superintendent attention, as well as my attention, to make sure that our kids are balanced physically and emotionally in school and all that that entails. Our kids do, they want to be really involved in a lot of things here, and that's one of the things that we celebrate about our school. But we've got to be mindful about that. It's not just about the classroom, it's about the whole being. And so, we've spent a lot of energy here looking at the mental health supports that we have for kids and making sure that those are dialed in. RTI in the high school. I want to share that the last in-service day of the school year, we've been doing a lot of work throughout the year on RTI. And I asked departments to complete three questions about what it looked like in their department. And the words that you're about to see are not my words. They're words of our department, they're words of our teachers, they're words of our ed techs, they're words of our school as a whole and the staff and the expertise that they bring into this field. So, I want you to be aware of that. RTI. In-class interventions by teachers, including enrichment and remediation. Teachers don't want to wait until the end of the year to have a kid recover. They want to catch them right then, right now. Multiple chances to show proficiency. What happens if a student has one chance and doesn't demonstrate proficiency? Do they fail? No. Our teachers want multiple opportunities for the kids so that professional discretion says beyond a shadow of a doubt whether they're proficient or whether they need more help. Multiple forms of assessment. It's not just the old pencil-paper test that we used to take when we were in school. It looks different. Voluntary and mandatory student interventions before school, after school, and during teacher prep. This one made me giggle when I wrote it because at some point, teachers will say, "Why don't you come in and spend a little time with me in the morning?" Because they know the student needs it. Yet, at some point, it stops becoming voluntary and the teacher says, "I need you to come in." Right? So, just a little, a little teacher humor. At some point, it has to become mandatory. Homework and quiz corrections. So, teachers will give additional opportunities to add credit back if a student has not necessarily done as well as they needed to do the first time around. More needs-based courses in the master schedule. For example, Fundamentals of Foreign Language, Fundamentals of World History, and AP courses as numbers warrant. Another piece that I was cognizant about throughout this presentation was making sure that you know that RTI isn't just for remediation. It's for enrichment. And if you take a look at our master schedule, we have a lot of AP courses here for kids. That's part of RTI. We've added, as the numbers have demonstrated, our kids are capable of learning these things, and we need to add more to the schedule for those offerings. So, it's not just remediation. It's enrichment and remediation so that we teach for all kids. Mr. Hills? There you are.
Good evening. Lee asked me to come and give you a brief overview of what the fundamentals courses are looking like. And this is an evolving process. This is a course that we looked at our freshmen in our world history classes. And our freshman world history classes are everybody in the same class. We don't have all the social studies classes in that sense. And so, we had quite a range. The social studies department, over the number of years, have been asking for an opportunity to be more targeted with their instruction. And so, a fundamentals course came open in the spring. It was an opportunity for me to team teach with Chelsea Vickersen. And it was an opportunity for us to select some students who had some demonstrated needs. And they were having difficulty with the standards in the traditional world history class. And this is an opportunity for us to be a little bit more targeted with our instruction and focus more on the student needs than everybody takes the class and they pass or fail. One of the things that I wanted to start with is a quote from one of the students. This happened about two and a half months or so into the course. One of the things we asked for was some feedback from the students to see how it was going, see how things were progressing for them. Chelsea and I had an idea how they were going, but we wanted to get some feedback from them. And this student wrote, "I'm finally in a class where I'm learning." I thought that was very powerful. They had not had some success or the success they thought they should have. So, the fundamentals class was a smaller class. We had a cap of sixteen so that we could focus on student needs. And the goal of us was to try to think about and how do we focus on student needs and how we achieve them. They, again, were not having success in the traditional social studies classroom. They were not achieving not only the traditional grade, but they weren't achieving the standards either. And so, this was setting them up for failure. And so, we decided to do something a little bit different. The way we approached it, it was team taught between Ms. Vickersen, who is a special ed teacher at Hampden Academy, and myself. So, I brought the content piece, she brought the special ed piece. And between the two of us, we really worked well in trying to design instruction to meet the needs of the students. Part of that was a different textbook. We looked at a different Lexile score for that. We approached it differently. There was a lot less me-time in front of the class. There was a lot more opportunities, a lot more project-based, things of that nature. And so, that was a little bit different. One of the things, though, that we were very clear on, and Ms. Larson, Lee was very clear on, was that we were going to achieve the same standards. And so, we're just going to achieve the standards a little differently. Yes, sir?
I think non-professionals might have a little difficulty with the concept of Lexile score.
Lexile score is the reading, essentially, the reading level of the textbook. And most of them, I know the book that we currently use is a ninth-grade Lexile score. We selected one with a lower Lexile score so that the students could be more accessible. Students, people say, "Well, this book isn't anywhere near as thick as the other book." Well, they're not reading the other book. The other book is useless. And so, they weren't accessing it. So, I'll just hand that around and show them, take a look at it. And so, the students were actually involved with reading it. One of the things I was concerned with is that would they read the book? Would they read in class? And we started, and I would do some reading and Chelsea would do some reading. We had an ed tech in the classroom, he also did some reading. And about three months in, the students wanted to read. They didn't want us to read it from there. And so, here's a group of students who had some demonstrated difficulties, who were willing to read in front of their peers. And I thought that was a very powerful statement, what the course was trying to achieve. The big thing for the course is that we tried to celebrate student success. They took the success that they had and they really ran with it. They were really focused, they did a nice job. Chelsea and I were very surprised by the end of the year, what they had learned, what they were able to give back to us, what they had gotten out of the course. And so, we're very pleased with that. We had no real expectation and they certainly just went with it like gangbusters. So, it was a really interesting approach. Most of the students in the class achieved a passing grade and had success on the standards. Not all students did. Again, we're not meeting all the student needs. And so, now we need to, as Lee was saying, we need to now look at that group of students who didn't achieve success in the fundamentals class. What else can we offer them? And so, we're really trying to take an approach where we meet the student needs instead of just presenting the material in such a way, you either get it or you're done. And so, the course really was an interesting course. We're now going to offer a full-year world history class in the fall. I'm going to move up. Evidently, I've been promoted, I'm going to go to US history this year. So, I'll be teaching a US history class, fundamentals course. And then, I would assume, as we move forward and student need is there, will we look at an economics course and/or an MGP? So, those will be the required courses in social studies. Again, the piece that was probably the most interesting was that we were able to achieve the standards without sacrificing the revenue. We approached it differently. We didn't just dumb it down. And I think that was an important part. Any questions? I'll be back a little later on.
He's my comic relief. It's good. It also looks like additional time and support for students. And one of the things that we've really tried to do over the last several months is think about how we can be innovative because the traditional day doesn't necessarily work for all of our kids. Online courses and modules for standards recovery. We've itemized also the plans within each of the departments. And depending on what the needs are for standards recovery, depending on the availability of staff, some of us, some of the departments are looking at different modules for kids to recover standards that need to be recovered. And then, as a school, we have an RTI identification process to our heart teams. So, if we continue to see kids struggle, we have a process that ultimately channels them to get clarified interventions across the school. Guiding point number four. What will we do if they already know it? We get to celebrate student success and enrich, enrich, enrich. So, this is the other end of the spectrum, the enrichment. Not remediation, but enrichment. Examples of when this work occurs. Before and after school. We have kids that add classes to their schedule with teachers before the teacher's day actually starts. They have a zero-hour class, if you will. We also have teachers that work with kids after school. In study halls, they take extra courses. They do independent studies with our teachers. Sometimes those needs arise and teachers support a student completely outside of the regular day to complete objectives of a course. Teacher prep periods. It's common practice when you're walking in the halls here. A teacher cannot have a full class, but you see kids either working on makeup work or extra labs or getting a little extra help from teachers. Sometimes our teachers will pull kids, and that's one of the things we're trying this year in the math department, is a designated block of RTI math where a teacher can go across the department and pull kids needing that extra help. So, we're really trying to be creative with options for kids here. And coming this fall, Tuesdays and Thursdays in the library, we'll have extended hours. We're also having our adult ed program come into this building and we'll have the capability to offer students additional help at night if that better meets their needs. Where we're headed. Continue to work on RTI. As we learn more about the needs of our kids, that's going to be an evolving process. It won't ever stop. You're back again.
Back again. So, in social studies, as I already sort of let the cat out of the bag, we are going to move forward towards the fundamentals courses. We're also going to be looking at, as Lee had talked about earlier, some different methods of instruction. And these courses are not dumbed-down courses. They're not general courses, whatever. In the past, they might have been called. We really need to think about how we instruct them and how we meet the student needs. And I think that's the key for all of us to keep coming back to. What's the student need and how do we meet it? With the fundamentals course, it gives us one more arrow in the quiver to work with. Gives us one more thing to be able to offer to students. We need to know what they know, and we need to know what standards they're achieving. And so, we are changing a little bit the way we assess our standards. In social studies, we've moved from more of a high-stakes to a bit more organic process where the students can demonstrate that on a daily basis. And that's going to change, not only the fundamentals courses, but it's also going to be changed in the other courses as well. And so, students will have an opportunity, multiple opportunities, to demonstrate what they've learned. So, that's a significant change for how we're going to assess students and how they're doing on their standards. At this point, we're not able to offer as much RTI as we were hoping in social studies. We're down a couple people. We're looking to do more RTI within the department, but we don't have the staffing at this current venue. We're working with Marie Caldwell. She's helping us, involved with a number of credit recovery that way. And I know the special ed department, I met with them just before school got out, they're also coming on board to help us do some credit recovery that way. It's not really an optimum way to do it, but it's a way that we can try to, again, meet some more student needs until sometime that we get a few more staff. And then, finally, we're always looking for new ways for students to recover standards. One of the things that we have not explored and we need to as a school is can students achieve standards and demonstrate them on things outside of the school? If they have an experience or trip or things of that nature, can they achieve some standards in an independent format? So, those are some things that we're thinking about as well. So, that's where we're headed in social studies. Question? Yes, sir.
So, I have two. But the first one is, so when you look at your learners, you're matching them where they are. Do you have any, or have we found or working with, any ways of actually identifying to begin the school year, visual learner, oral learner, hands-on learner, and be able to match it that way? Are we not quite there yet?
We're not quite at that level yet. What we're looking at is a couple of different data points to determine whether they should be in a fundamentals course or whether they should be in the regular course. So, some of the things we're looking at, acquire teacher recommendations. We're looking at, obviously, grades and/or how they're doing on their standards. We're also looking at teachers within the department. We've spent a lot of time with this in the department. So-and-so had them last year. What do they look like for this year? And so, we're trying at that point to start that process. So, not to the point, the granular point that you are yet, but we hope to get there.
Nice. The other one I have is fascinated by, you just mentioned at the end, the outside-of-school type activities. So, when you think about looking at a math, I might not be able to really, you know, some kids learn with policy. But then, there's other kids, like Olympics are coming up, right? So, if someone's an athlete or very involved in Olympics, they might be able to say, "Okay, I can tell you where on the world all these people come from." You know what I mean? Like, so, where are we in that process of being able to, like, what we need to do to be able to have that count, like these badges or what have you, I think? And then, you know, engaging the people that you'd need to have engaged from around the community to be able to support that?
What I'd really like to do is to get to a point where the students are aware of the standards and most of them are going to be achieved in the classroom. But there may be opportunities for students to achieve them outside of the classroom, either in the world of work or, as you're saying, a variety of different methods. Currently, I don't have the staff to be able to start tracking that. That would act more like an independent study. And the staff would need to meet with the student, explain the standard to the student. They would then need to go do something to demonstrate that they have achieved that standard. And then, the teacher would have to then make a judgment whether they achieved the standard or not. I think it's a great opportunity. We currently do that some with independent studies. Students have an interest in criminal justice. And so, Jason Doerr, who does a number of our independent studies and social studies, will sit with them. And they design a process where they go through and they look at how they're going to achieve it, how they're going to demonstrate mastery. And then, he meets with them periodically. I would assume that that would be a very similar method with outside standards achievement. I need a couple more people to get to that.
Lee, is there any implication on what Jason's doing? That's fascinating. Is there any information on that or how he does it?
I could come back at some point if you'd like.
Because what you're really saying is we could replicate that on a bigger scale.
Yes. Jason gives up one of his three prep periods. And he does anywhere from two to about seven independent studies a year with students. He works very hard with them, giving them an opportunity to really excel in an area where they've got a passion or an interest and wants to go there. I know Mrs. King also worked with a student this year. They had a very interesting approach that they wanted to take on that subject. It really didn't fit anywhere conveniently. And so, she did an independent study with him, and it really worked out well.
Good. That would be great. Thank you.
Other question?
We also need to think about the needs of faculty supporting students as we're moving forward, including protected time for assessment analysis. If I overbook them in PBEs or in services, they don't have time to do this work within their departments. And so, for me to be really cognizant of that as we move forward is extremely important. RTIPD. Once they know the needs of those kids, what, how do they need help? Do they need our help professionally? And oftentimes, what we're seeing is that we have great teacher-leader opportunities from folks within our district, not necessarily speaking of someone coming in from outside. What are strategies that your neighbor's using with junior achievement that are working really well? Strategy development. And then, AIM-PD towards specific strategies teachers can use to meet the needs of their students. Like I said just a few months ago, really emphasizing the teacher-leader opportunities. So, as staff at HHS and RSU22 continue their work, I would like to make a formal request of the RSU22 Board of Directors. Before I put that formal request on the screen, do you have questions about the presentation that you need clarification on? Or questions that you might want answered? One of the hopes that I would have in the future is that we bring back some of the teachers that were not able to make it tonight so that I can give you some progress monitoring data, share updates periodically. Yes, sir?
Principal Magan, how does this, how is this going to dovetail in with the idea of the diploma, having a proficiency-based diploma? Because we're talking about proficiency-based education here and a system of proficiency-based education. But, like, the questions that I have wind up being around, how is this going to be applicable to the diploma? Which I think is probably a step beyond what we're actually talking about today.
My request is focused on the diploma.
Oh, there you go. Oh, there you go.
Indeed it is. I felt like tonight, I spent a lot of time trying to figure out what questions you would have as a board, figuring out what you would know and what you didn't know. So what I tried to do was give you, and there was no way to make this exciting and fun, I apologize. I tried, Mr. Hills. But I needed to give you a view from 30,000 feet, so that you could educationally either support or not support what I was going to make as a request tonight. I hope that the presentation did that, but it won't be the last that you hear of it, because as a system of administrators, teachers, and students in this district, it's something that we're very aware of, and it's something that we need you as the board to have some kind of working knowledge on. So progress monitoring will be something that I offer if you're so interested by teachers.
Lee, I think once they hear the request, there's probably going to be a lot of questions.
Okay, let's put it up there. So I appreciate your consideration to amend Board Policy IKF, which is specifically graduation requirements. I'm asking that it reflect the class of 2020 to be the first graduating class with a proficiency-based diploma. That would be incoming freshman class this year at Hampden Academy.
So just to clarify, Lee, on that, the current policy is reflective of the class 2018?
Correct. And I have a copy of the graduation policy if you were not at the Ed Committee earlier.
Which in turn is based on previous thing.
It was.
It's 2018 is the first class. They've now amended that.
That's correct. State law is now 2021. Just this year, since I've been here, expectations from the state have changed twice. So it's a moving target. And one of the things we talked about in the Ed Committee earlier was, out of this have really become excellent instructional practices for staff here and for administrators too, in honing in on the needs of our kids. So regardless of what the state may or may not request next, we're not changing our target. We've got both systems of grading currently. If they drop one, we're still going to be pressing forward, because we've got the other in place, and it's a system that's well-designed by educators in this district.
Maybe Amanda, at this time, you could go back and inform the full board of extensive conversation you had with our Ed Committee and bring the recommendation.
So this has been kind of a theme that we've clearly been talking about for two years now. However, we've really, Lee took some time at the beginning of the summer to really look at the data, which was the missing piece to the conversation, to move our conversation forward over the past two years. And so we've spent the past couple of months digging much deeper into the data than what you saw in this presentation. Jason's on our committee, so you can imagine the questions that have come up. And he answered them, so that was good.
I think it's a back end.
I'm going to come back to that, though, Jason, before we leave. On a positive note.
And so there was, you know, there was a lot of discussion back and forth, but what it comes down to is, we have a junior class right now who is, there's many people who would not meet the current proficiency-based diploma requirements, and that's not any one person's fault, that's, it's changed, and we just weren't prepared to provide them with the tools and the instruction at that point that they need for that. So by using the data and by, Lee's done a lot of work with her staff and throughout the district, we needed to come up with a timeline that we felt like, and the timeline was the class of 2020. We feel like if they are the first class to, they're the first class that we're going to have to be prepared, and correct me because I'm stumbling with my words right now, they're going to be prepared, we're going to have given them all the appropriate tools and opportunities to meet that proficiency-based diploma. Now, there was some question about, how do we know this? Can we use our previous data to be able to ensure that the trend is going in that direction? And we do have some previous data, however, because of the different initiatives and changes that have been made in instruction, like was just presented here, that is a new change. And so if we look back at seven-year trends, that wasn't going on. So there is a piece of, we've put all our ducks in a row, we're going to move on ahead, we don't want to lose our momentum with the staff development and the curriculum development. But at the same time, we do need to come up with a concrete plan for these kids and their families.
Mary, would you like to add anything to Lee and Amanda's overview?
I think the conversation with the Ed Committee was that we want to make sure the kids have all those opportunities, and I also want to reiterate, people have done a lot of work so far, but we still have a way to go. And in order to make, make sure that we're giving kids every opportunity possible, it makes sense to do this and just allow us to continue to tweak and hone our skills.
I think for me, the biggest walkaway in just a concise little piece was, two years ago, the system started to be developed, and we can't hold kids who are currently juniors this year accountable because the system wasn't finally developed. It's a very cumbersome system to develop, and that's what I hoped tonight would share with you. There are so many layers that had to be done and done really well, and each layer that was put in front of the staff in this building, they've done really, really well. But our kids shouldn't be held accountable, current class 2018, because the system wasn't developed in its completion, and it was a multiple-year process, and will continue to go through an evolution. If it's not done, there will be adjustments based on the needs of our kids, and that's the right thing to do.
I do have one question. And that was a point I was going to bring up, Principal Madden, when you just said that at the, I missed tonight's educational committee meeting, but the prior meeting, you mentioned that without a system in place where kids for the four years are at Hampden Academy, to then hold them to standards that imagine that all would have taken place is not fair, is not right. But you, Hampden Academy will continue to have students come to Hampden Academy from the other schools, who are going to be at different levels of readiness. So how are we systemically sort of working this backwards now? You know, we have the system, we're trying to put systems in place for Hampden Academy, it sounded like that's not going well. Are we also doing this?
That's a nice segue back to the point that Jason brought up, which I thought was a great point. There's two responses, and I asked Mary to give, in addition, Scott, to your question. Number one is, we have immense student data that Mary generates and has. I would ask her to have a frequent presentation of the board, maybe quarterly, whatever, to give us an overview of those targets and whether students are meeting them or not meeting them. So you have a very clear picture of grades two through 12, if you will, of the demographics of our student outcomes. I was going to hold this one until after the board votes, but I'll take it. And I think Jason really initiated a good conversation, led us to a conversation tonight that we as educators and parents must have a different conversation about, and that is the policy on retention. If Rick Lyons is in grade seven, and Dr. Glenn Cross and Mrs. Nichols want to hear me here, in grade seven, and you're not meeting the standards, what do we talk about promotion or retention then, differently than we ever have before? Some people might call it, we've had social promotion for years. Can we afford to do that anymore? We need to take a different look so that when they meet the standards and have all those guidelines in place at a high level of proficiency, when they enter Hampden Academy, their level of performance is going to be increased significantly, because we prepared them. So we'll know the data more extensively. And we also will have a different conversation about the retention expectations that now pertains not only to credit attainment, but standard attainment as well. Mary, do you want to add to that?
We are working on that. K D R A is, has been looking at that, and we had different ways to have response to intervention, different ways that we might help kids, pre-teaching, re-teaching, supporting in a variety of ways. So do we need to do more? Yes, but the conversation, in many districts, it's not getting well, it's just high schools out there swinging and raised by itself. So we really try to take responsibility for getting our kids ready, and that we're all having a piece of this to support as they go to the high schools, so the high school doesn't have to do it all by themselves.
So Scott, we'll be looking at the policy retention very closely. But let me personalize this for a moment. As your superintendent, I met numerous times with a student in the middle school this year. If that student were there next year and so on, we'd have a different conversation, because that student clearly was not meeting the standards and expectations. So what's that mean with promotion or lack thereof? Because as Jason brought up, we had the conversation, the rules of the game and the layout of the curricula has changed because of the conversation we're having today, unlike 2012, 2005, and so on. And teaching methodologies that also Jason alluded to tonight has changed because of how we, we don't compartmentalize that, okay, Johnny, you're in grade one, we're never going to move you out of grade one. No. Now we're looking at, you have expectations that you can meet or exceed in grade two mathematics, we're going to have an exchange of teachers across the grade, so we eliminate those traditional boundaries, if you will. So my basic message is, it's going to create a different conversation with educators to make sure that we're at the top of our game as it pertains to standards and the attainment thereof, and the credits. Because the paradigm has changed. Before, it was always credits, that was it. So I hope that's a fairly good overview of what you're asking. It's a very, it's complex. It's complex.
I look at it, you know, I mean, as a, I coach farm league baseball, and the better your farm league baseball team is, the better your little, the better your high school team ends up being, so on and so forth. And if we are, I like, I like the focus that's been put here from the high school. And I'm completely supportive of, given the dysfunction in the Department of Ed that we've had to deal with and the changing standards and so on and so forth, I'm completely in support of changing the standard to 2020. But I hope that we are similarly, you know, working so that people in different towns, but in the same grade, are all being moved forward in, at the same appropriate times.
Yes, yes. That's a great point.
Doing the best in the high school.
And what makes it more convoluted, if you will, from my opinion, is the in-migration of students coming in from various school districts in the course of the year. So how do we make sure that we respond favorably to that as well? So I like your analogy of the minor league baseball, it's a good analogy.
One of the things that I've been really impressed with this year in conversation at Admin Council with other principals is hearing, elementary has been doing standards for a long time. They've been doing RTI and differentiation. If you're an elementary teacher, that's part of what you learn in college before you ever go into the classroom. High school teachers are content specialists. They don't take particular coursework necessarily on differentiation nor special education, unless it's something that they choose to add in. Okay? So we're, when we're pushing these needs up to older and older kids and teachers at higher and higher levels, we're essentially having to teach folks and support in things that they've never been experienced to teach. Mr. Hills was never a reading teacher. That's not what he went to school to do. He went to school because he wanted to be a history major. So he teaches social studies. But now, by the way, he's teaching reading and comprehension via social studies. Elementary's been doing this for a long time, we've got a lot to learn from these folks. We're a team here, and so that's why I said at the beginning, it's a district, it's principals, it's curriculum coordinator, it's all of this. And now that this presentation will be shared with Hampden Academy's staff at the beginning of the year in service, so that we can have conversations with other peers in the district as educators as well, because we've got to have help in it. We've all got to come together and figure it out. So with that, I ask for your support.
So with that, it brings us to the Education Committee's recommendation, and my recommendation is to ask the board to modify current policy to reflect it of the class 2020.
The question, where does this put us with other districts?
Mary, where would you say comparatively this puts us with other districts that you work with very closely?
So funny you should ask that, I was at a summit today, we did an affinity where people are. We're, as a district, we're moving faster than a lot of people, or further ahead, I guess, somewhere. Are we as far ahead as everybody? No. But that's okay.
In specific to the 2020 change, if the other schools are 2018, do we perceive that impacting our enrollment? People making choice to Hampden versus other districts?
You mean more people coming to us?
More people coming to us, if we've allowed more time for the proficiency to be met than schools that still keep it at 2018.
Well, actually, I haven't looked at the people's policy, graduation policy, and some of what their expectations are. I can certainly ask some of the colleagues, but the law is 2021, so we're really.
So we're still.
So the law's 2021, but they constantly, it's still in flux, so we don't even know if 2021 is set in stone? Well, that question came up at the Ed Committee tonight, right?
That's why we're talking today, about if we start, so that the freshmen, our freshmen now, we're just going to go ahead and do it, and we'll be ready for number one.
Meanwhile, keeping a close eye on that class as they go through and making sure that we really were as prepared as we think we're going to be.
I move that we approve the recommendation.
All right. We have a motion, and a second to approve the request and the recommendation that we push back to 2020. Are there any additional questions? Why don't we push it back to 2021? Wait for the state to figure out what it is they want?
Part of what we shared out earlier with the Ed Committee. I am going to be brutally honest, I don't like to initiative chase, I don't think it's healthy for teachers, and I don't think it's healthy for our kids, and we're dangling changes as the State Department sees fit, and there's no other way for me to say those things. We're ready for it, and we've put a lot of energy, a lot of hard work, a lot of time into it, and we need to keep that momentum up. Teachers are ready to continue to challenge their kids with this in front of them. And given yet another change or a delay even longer, we're going to lose that momentum. That's my fear.
And when I say that the Education Committee, if we're really serious about doing this, we should set that firm date and stick to it.
Thank you. Any additional questions? If not, again, the motion is to approve. All in favor? Any opposed? Doesn't look like it, looks like it's unanimous. Now, just a strong sense of appreciation of the Ed Committee, because as Amanda alluded to, that committee has done a lot of work, it does also Lee and Mary as well, so thank you all. Okay, just continuing with my report, I did provide you a draft notes that I'm working on, the teacher exit surveys. That came actually to the Ed Committee as well. If you have any questions, you certainly can send me an email or call me. I think there's some interesting feedback of our exit surveys. I also provided for you, based on the question asked at our previous meeting, what's the question coming up in November with the referendum on the 3%? I gave you an overview, and hopefully that's self-explanatory. But I also sent you this morning an article of the position of the Chamber of Commerce, which I found very interesting. And also embedded in the article, I found very interesting that the former Commissioner of Education is the treasurer of the entity. Getting back to your question, Tony, about what's DOE going to be, well, all of a sudden now, the former commissioner is in a position not to support the question in the November referendum. If you read the B D N, there's another article in the editorial page where someone supported it. So that's basically how it's going to work. Also, I just wanted to make sure that you can see, the essence of it is support classroom instruction, and very clearly was a delineation, no money for administration. Administration's hands-off on this money allocation that comes to bear. Any questions or comments on the referendum question we'll all be voting on in November? Scott?
I would really like to see this board endorse this, this question.
Okay.
And actually take an affirmative stance that we support the idea of full school funding. I think we've all said at one point in time or another during the committee meetings that we support full school funding. And what we've seen is, since 2004, when the referendum was passed, we've never had 55% schooling.
That's correct.
The initiative does the best job it can. I don't think there's a perfect vehicle for doing this, aside from electing a legislature that actually just sets 55% as a number and sticks to it. But we've seen multiple legislatures come and go, and it hasn't happened. And the people already, through referendum, voted to make, to try to make that happen. Can't find a legislature that way. This is really the only way to do it. And it would accomplish that goal of providing the funding at the level of 55% that the people said they wanted to have in 2004. So I'm just going to make a motion that RSU 22 School Board endorse passing this question, because I think it's something we absolutely need to do.
I'm going to play devil's advocate. I am absolutely opposed to question number two. I'm not sure the 55% school funding, we haven't done it yet, that actually is something that was put in the committees and should be done. Before we go and penalize those folks that contribute quite a bit already to our communities, we need to have more accountability at the state level. We need an artification that has some sort of direction. We need accountability across the board when it comes to finances. And when you think about, you're going to take, someone making $200,000 a year, you're going to say, okay, we have knocked down our job, so we're going to take six grand. It's $500 a month. That's real money. That is someone's pocket to go to education of which we've already committed to funding and don't fund. So to give another hundred and some odd million dollars to a state government that doesn't seem to be able to balance a checkbook, just does not seem to be the right thing. The other thing I think we need to do is we also take a look at demographics. When you think about people that give scholarships, you think about people that contribute behind the scenes to our, our funding, and think about people that fund sports teams, you think about people in our community that do a lot of these things, you, you come out and you take six grand out of their pocket. And now, if it was, and we're going to raise taxes 1% on everybody so that we come up with the money to fund it, I would be all for that. But I think putting the line at $200,000 to fund education of which our, I agree with you, we need a legislation that will stand by what we do and it's got this accountability button. I would not be for the board of RSU 22 coming out as a supporter. I think individually we could do that, but I think as a supporter...
I support direct funding. However, you have sales tax, you have real estate tax, and you have income tax. And I think if we look at some of how state has mismanaged spending of those taxes, to your point, if we're in a community that can benefit from public-private opportunities, if the private is additionally taxed to give to the public, there's not much left in the private to benefit that community. And I think the need is statewide, not just in those communities that can afford to support this kind of a public-private combination. I think people need to remember that the public comes from the private as well. The money that's in the public coffre comes from the private. It doesn't just creep from the sky or from a tree. It has to be taxed from something that's providing revenue. And I think if someone says your car is broken, you can agree on that. And if you can say this is a broken car right now, I think whether you try to pick one of your children to pay for it, who are may or may not have any attachment to that or any direct responsibilities where it gets dicey, and I think that's why it's been gridlocked for so long. It's hard to spread that out. Again, I, I can support half of what you're saying. I, I think our legislators need to figure out how to solve all of the tax issues, not just education. We've got other needs that are not being met that are becoming a burden on the school systems and the state because we're not addressing them in other ways as well. And the list is huge. So I, that's my, my two cents.
My own sense is that this is going to be a topic that is on the front burner in the coming months, coming two months ahead. And I suggest it's probably something that we keep as, you know, an agenda, an agenda item, a discussion point as a board going forward during that timeframe. I think there'll be a lot of information coming out on both sides probably during that time. It's something that we have to stay on top of and consider and continue discussing.
You know, but discuss point though, if, if the focus is on who pays for it, you, you pit people against each other just on the basis of that one item. What we need to do is put pressure on the legislators to solve the problem and to not, I mean, this is citizens' referendum. If, if our elected officials can't come up with a solution, we need to put pressure on them to do that.
I think that can know that.
You can't just keep batting back a referendum after another that conveniently keep getting shot down because of a special interest for or against. This needs to be collected. We, we have quite a few people that are supposed to be working on this in Augusta. We should maybe apply pressure there.
But what you guys are both arguing for is for the perfect solution. That unless we are willing to solve all the problems, we don't address this problem. We've had this problem. We've had it for years. When the town councilors and town managers come to us and say, you can't keep increasing our budget because we have to keep cutting our budget. They're cutting their budget because of cuts to state revenue sharing. They're cutting their budget because of cuts to education funding. I mean, we're, we're funding as a state at the, at the exact same level right now that we're funding education five years ago. Everybody here knows the cost of education has gone up every single year. It would be ideal, and I, as I said, it would be ideal if the legislator, the legislature would get his act together and do something about it. If anybody foresees that happening in the near future, I would be surprised. We can, we can put pressure, because I mean, frankly, the legislators from this area are some of the key players in, in making sure that this has not happened, that, that funding has not come to this school system or to any other school system in the state in the way it's supposed to. So it'd be great if we could just put some pressure on them, make some people change their minds, and then have schools funded 55%. That hasn't happened. I don't believe that's going to happen. And if it doesn't happen, what do we do next budget cycle when we go to that document and we see that instead of a small increase like we're hoping to get, we see another cut? Because that's pretty much what we're looking at. That's where, that's the direction it's been going. This is the only realistic method we've had to change that. And just as a point of information, Jason made the comment about $6,000 on $200,000. If you're making $200,000, your taxes do not change under this piece of legislation. Under this piece of legislation, if you're making $201,000, you are taxed an extra 3% on $1.
Correct.
It does not affect any dollar before $200,000. So, if people are not interested in supporting this and endorsing this, that's certainly up to them. But when our next budget cycle rolls around, and we are sitting at this table, and we are debating what we're going to cut, what we're not going to be able to increase, what we'd like to increase, what we're going to do with the limited funds that we have, and we're going to have people come into this roster right here that, once a moment ago, and they are going to be saying, don't you ask us towns for more money? That's, we don't want to pay any more money. We're going to remember that we had an opportunity to at least be vocal and support a referendum question that would address that exact issue.
Understandable. I think that's a fundamental difference between you and I. We can rely on the state government. For as a community, we decide we're going to take control of our schools and control of our funding, and we can tell the story that we need to tell. And we can, as we've talked about before, with the Finance Committee, the Budget Committee, the Budget, the Building Committee, kind of looking at this Education Committee and saying, what, what are we telling our folks? And we should probably move on to the next topic, because Scott and I could probably keep going, but...
Well, there's a side effect too. We talked about this earlier when the other tax piece came up. And some, some of my business partners reside in Florida, so they benefit from an eight-and-a-half percent salary increase over me because I live in Maine. If that keeps going up, what we're seeing is a lot of senior folks that are probably high-income earners, that due to some of the conversations that took place and due to this very thing, have chosen to make Maine not their state of residence. To prove that it's not your state of residence, it means not just one day shy of six months. It means you are not on boards, you're not in advisory groups, you're not in all those things that this state is lacking right now due to the age curve and the demographics. And if we continue to push people out of the state, folks that we value their volunteer time, because we're going to charge them more to be able to volunteer and do that, I think we're sending the wrong message. I think, again, this gets back to the legislator looking at a, maybe a more comprehensive way to tax those that use this state. And I don't mean just those that live here, but perhaps those that come here in the summertime and other times of the year. Again, that debate can go long and hard. But again, I think we're all on the same page for supporting the schools. I'm on the page for supporting the schools as well. I just, I would hate to see that impact, that negative impact to the folks that we need sitting around a lot of these tables, charitable institutions and otherwise.
And I just think all of society benefits from an educated population, not just those that earn over $200,000 a year. And I don't think it's fair to single them out to fund something that the state is failing right. The pressure needs to be put on the state and not people just because they happen to earn a certain income level. And I think you pointed out, they already paid quite a bit. At the federal level, if you're earning $200,000, you're in the top 5%. Which is $160,000 gets you in the top 5%. And at the federal level, they're already paying 58% of all federal income taxes collectively. So they're paying quite a chunk to maintain our society already. And I just, at some point, we're going to run out of their money. They're going to leave like Jesus, they're just not going to pay it. But my basic premise is it's not fair to single out a certain segment just because they earn over a certain rate to fund something that the state is failing to take care of. And the other thing I would point out, there have been citizens' referendums passed in the, in, in the past, and the legislature's immediately amended or repealed. And I can see that happening to this, though. Because once they're initiated, they just become a statute, it's a law that's subject to, you know, whatever the legislature wants to do with it. And, and I think the reason they're using the citizens' referendum on this issue is you couldn't get this through the legislature, and you certainly wouldn't get it passed the current administration's veto.
That's, that's exactly...
And that's why they're using the referendum process. And I think that's a real corruption of that process. They're pushing a real populist type of message that I think could probably get voted through. But I don't think it's the appropriate forum for it. We should be hammering on the legislature to take care of their business like they're supposed to now. That's just what I take.
This is what happens.
Yeah, well, I understand it has it in the past, and there, there was, I believe, a citizens' referendum that required the state to fund it 55%. And they just either ignored or vetoed it already in the past.
And hopefully, we're going to have a good friend on the education.
So I'm going to suggest...
And we're going to hammer them hard to make these decisions.
I'm going to suggest we move on right now. Though I do think we can talk about this for a long time, and I hope we do in the coming weeks and months ahead. But it's an obviously important issue, and I think we should... We'll have it on the future agendas as well. Item D, I did want to just alert you and remind you that we have, Tim Pease is going to present to us on the 21st his great presentation he does titled, " roles and responsibilities of school board members." So we'll look forward to that. Noah, what do you got, sir? What do you have, sir?
Well, it's a great time. It's a hundred percent. But there are some activities still going on, like NHS, for example. So we're from, we're from Triflin House, and we have a few volunteer events that are happening over the next few weeks. Ball sports are starting up in a couple of weeks, so it's exciting. And this isn't directly related to the school, but I think our senior league, our senior league Hammond New York, um, baseball players have made it to the semifinals in between the whole series.
Yep.
So that's pretty cool.
They're playing tomorrow night at eight.
Yes. So that's, that's pretty exciting. We have, we have some kids from...
Great.
And also, there's something you talked about earlier with Mr. Dor's independent study program. I'm actually projecting on that this year, so I can provide some insight on that for the year.
Great. And Principal Magnet, just to remind you, we'll need our other student board rep as a junior, hopefully in the near future as well.
Thank you for that reminder.
Thank you. Ema, what do you have?
Nothing further than the report. However, during the athletic committee meeting, I think I liked Keith, well, I'm noted here. You know, we've had a dry season in that we're at a point where last Thursday, we started a plan on watering our athletic facilities and our grounds. So, Boarding Park and also the practice football field has a well, and they have watering equipment. However, our other activities, our other fields do not. So therefore, an unforeseen thing that's going to occur, that our water bills will be higher. And that I think we're taking due diligence and being responsible in watering our facilities because we had Sergeant Corporation come out today, and they said if we don't water, we'll lose them. So I just want you to be aware of that.
Is the watering not, not also charged for sewer?
It's charged for sewer too.
Can we get one of those meters?
We have a meter. So, we have a meter on two hydrants right now. So I don't think it'll affect the sewer, I don't think it'll affect the sewer.
Yeah, because the sewer's a fairly big part of the bill, right?
So I just want you to be aware of that. And I'm looking at possibly $8,000 to $10,000.
It's the cost of a well.
A cheaply increasing fields.
Very much cheap, yes. But I want you to be aware of it.
We discussed that about the cost of a well in future years in the meeting.
Did you also talk about wetting agent? Uh, you made me call, do you folks use turf consulting of being true?
Yes, we, we've talked about possible fungus being because of humidity and overwatering.
No, not, not that. It's actually a wetting agent that actually helps retain the moisture and pull it out of the air. It's actually like a desiccant that, that...
We'll take a look at that.
As long as it doesn't affect the place surface, it may be a way to reduce water expense, keep it moist longer, and as long as it don't affect the...
We'll look at that. Michael, you get that? I got it. I'll talk tomorrow.
Oh, Billy.
And you got Rob's number, right?
Go, go, Bill Huxman.
Yeah, we, yeah.
He's here.
Just want you to be aware.
Thank you, Ema. Item eight on the agenda, questions of board members. Jason.
We're being videotaped. So one of the things during this process that came to light was, this is in the town of Hampden budget, and they don't have a big one. So what happened was, the reason we didn't have filming at the last one was because they kind of selected the ones they thought the public would be the most interested in. Obviously, the budget meetings are the, most of the ones that they would be more interested. So I just was going to ask my fellow colleagues from other towns, if you wouldn't mind just approaching a town manager, whatever. And it doesn't cost a lot each time, but if we could all chip in a little bit, we could probably get all of our funded, or us as a school department saying, we'll chip in something, get them all videotaped, because it's great to see, like, these presentations and stuff, that everybody can see if they weren't here. But it would make it a lot easier if we kind of spread it a little bit. So I thought the first thing, we could probably just reach out to our towns, and then if that did work, then maybe we could...
Is there a reason why we can't do it ourselves? Just upload it to YouTube?
I've had a brief conversation with Mr. Savis. I'll revisit that. I believe we can do that. But let me do that, and I'll also follow up on Jason's point.
And I bet we have to alternate either the way we sit on the room or the way the cameras set up, so they actually know what you folks look like. The right side of the room right now is here.
It's evening, it's...
On the day, Duber, we'll sit on that side. Okay. Any additional questions? Okay, we'll move to committee reports. Athletic was mentioned. Are there, are there additional reports or comments from Athletic? Oh, okay. Building Committee.
You have, you have the minutes, and we'll have a brief presentation. And we have WRC representatives here. The Building Committee is looking for an endorsement of their recommendation to apply for state revolving renovation funds and possibly major capital project application. So this is a pretty exciting presentation, and that we'd like a full endorsement of the board, or at least board, project board vote towards moving forward.
That presentation will come up in about, hopefully, 10 minutes.
Well, hopefully, five, 10 minutes. Maybe five minutes.
Item 12 B. Item 12 B.
Maybe three minutes.
So policy, we're about to have a policy consideration. Yes. Consideration on that one. Wally, the ad hoc committee.
Ad hoc committee for substance abuse has had a couple of meetings since our last meeting. Lots of rich discussion about where we want to go, how we want to move things along. We have decided to set up a booth for Children's Day in partnership with Banco Public Health for our communities, to give out some information. Their Banco Public Health is going to purchase some items to give away as gifts. Hampden Public Safety is going to set up a drug return booth for our school. Acadia Hospital, I think, is going to be setting up their own booth to give out some information, doing lots of stuff like that, and then looking, how are we going to move forward? In our first meeting last month, Sheriff Morton brought up the idea of doing some public service announcements. I thought I'd see if Mike could make an announcement about what's, one of the things that we're looking at.
Yeah, so we've contacted, do a PSA. Mike DeVito, who just retired from the NFL, walks through that, like he's coaching a team. And so they've asked our team to try to be the guys taking the stuff coaching. So we're looking to do announcements and getting permission. So we'll try to apply it to that, so that you can wait for time. But it'll be our kids doing this PSA, basically.
So I'm very excited about that. Sheriff Morton and Dan Stewart have been working on, interacting with some different people. There's been some conversations with UFC, where they come to town this week. Some conversations with Alex Gray about trying to get a ban to do a public service announcement. So lots of different things. So that'll get moving. I think that'll bring some more attention. We'll see how the Children's Day goes, and then we have another meeting at the end of We'll see how the Children's Day goes, and then we have another meeting end of the month to see where we're gonna go from there.
Thanks for keeping that ball rolling. Have I missed any committees?
You're all set.
If not, we're gonna move to policy, consideration for discussion and action on second reading of two policies. Again, bear in mind the comments that were made at the previous meeting about actually reading it. I think we can do that if anyone feels strongly about that, and would like to do so, or if they would like to waive that, you're welcome to make that motion as well. But I think we said we'd leave that up to the board to make that decision. So I know Karen's not here, but-
I think, I would like to think that both policies are reflective of comments that you've had based on the second reading, so it would be the recommendation of the policy committee that we approve the second reading and therefore adoption of policy AC and also policy JICA, non-discrimination, equal opportunity, affirmative action, and student dress respectively.
A motion to approve or to read it in its entirety?
I move that we waive the reading of the policies in their entirety.
All right. Second on that, all in favor? And we have a motion on the actual policy itself, on the second reading.
My motion.
In favor?
Yeah.
Was that motion for Warner both policies?
I'll second it, too. Answer both.
I'll second that motion. Sorry, Jason, I-
I vote my motion that we approve both policies as written.
Okay. And while you were seconding that?
Yes.
Okay. And John, just to be clear, your amendment was that we can bypass the reading of both-
There was a motion which was approved to waive the reading.
So we have a motion on the floor and a second to approve both policies as rewritten and as in your packets. Any questions about either of those policies? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Thank you for your good work on the student dress, and actually, to some degree, it addresses somewhat our earlier speaker's question tonight, so that's nice work there.
Okay, we're gonna move to old business, sorry, new business and the fall 2016 coaches.
Yes. You have two exhibits, and traditionally, we take these as a group, so I would ask you, based on the recommendations of the principals and athletic directors to myself, I'd ask you to accept the recommendations with respect to the coaching hires for the fall here at Hammond Academy, and also Reeves Brook Middle School and Samuel Wagner Middle School, as you can see in the associated exhibit. So I make that recommendation.
Typically, we have done these as a slate, and people would like them to do so. Encourage that.
I move that we approve both slates as slate.
So we have a second on that?
Second.
First and a second, okay. Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
I just got something I wanna say. Earlier, I saw that our, our new coach-
Yes.
Football coach is here.
Yeah.
I'm sure he got anxious, I couldn't, but he had his whole staff with him, too, which is pretty impressive. They were all here, so I just wanted to make a comment on that.
Okay, all in favor?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bissin, do you wanna make any comment?
Just a second, just a second.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I don't have any opposed.
Oh, I'm sorry. Are there, I'm sorry. Any, any opposed? One opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. I think we've got a really great staff for this fall with Justin Griffin hires. Hired Paul Wallman to be our girls soccer coach. Tejas up Row High School, and he's coach over there. We had Fred Lawler, who's a mentor to us, and kind of that, and that's cool, because I'm really the head of the staff for the fall.
Okay.
That's good to hear.
Thank you. Richard or Regan, any comments from your respective school? Are you all set? Regan? You do? Well, right now, we have a V soccer open. Yes, is that what you said? V, I'm sorry. Richard, you all set?
Yeah, I think our coaching site is looking pretty good.
Yes. You have a full slate, Richard? Very good. Thank you. Okay, now, thank you, sir.
Okay, now we'll turn to WBRC. Thanks for waiting.
Okay, Ema, how are yours?
Yep. This has been just a quick historical perspective. The building committee's been working on this for, I'd say, a year now, looking at a schematic design for the project of the McGrath Weatherby School, basically targeting the traffic configuration and possibly some other building renovations. So the building committee in the notes has a recommendation for your approach from doors this evening. We have WBRC representatives here, and they'll, along with the building committee, will go over their presentation. This is exactly the presentation that they gave to the building committee, in which the building committee gave an amendment, an animus, and a mic. So introduce yourselves, Michael and Paul, and introduce them, go from there.
Thanks for having us here this evening. This is Mike Trevanning, I'm an architect at WBRC.
And I'm Paul Molyak, I'm a civil engineer with WBRC.
So, go ahead.
Jump right into the scheduled part there. So there's, there's two schedule pieces that we wanna review with you tonight. The first one, the first option one is going after revolving renovation funds, and then the second schedule we wanted to run through, we'd be looking at it from going after a major capital improvement project, some of what you did for the Hammond Academy, Hammond Academy project. So the first schedule we have outlined here would be going after revolving renovation funds. The state just recently opened this up as an opportunity again that has been closed for a while. So we've completed our schematic design documents, we'll run through those after we get through some of the scheduled pieces. We've reviewed that with the building committee. State revolving renovation loan applications are due on September thirtieth. We're currently working with Ema to get those applications kinda fleshed out, to see where we need to go with those. Pretty straightforward document. And then we'd use the documents we created for the schematic design to support that submission as well. Approval of the state revolving renovation loan for both school projects. Keep in mind, there will be an application for both McGrath and a separate application for Weatherby. State was looking to approve those and rank those projects in the spring of, spring of next year. At that point, depending on where the, the projects fall and how that funding works out, we've started to design D to CD. What DD is, is our design development documents. That's the next step after SD that's been completed, and CD is our construction documents. We anticipate we'd be ending those, completing that work around the fall of 2017, setting up for November 2017 for the site work-related aspects of what we have showed to you tonight. Getting to a bid then immediately after that local referendum, starting construction in the spring of 2018, and then looking to complete that as soon as possible with DOE funds for the revolving renovation fund, having to be spent by July 2018. The project actually completed shortly thereafter.
So let's talk about state revolving renovation fund, because we have a lot of new board members here. The state revolving renovation fund was a, was a pot of money that the state had developed in the past. They've replenished that pot of money. It's about ten to twelve million dollars in that pot. You can apply for funding up to a million dollars per building, and they prioritize the needs. Priority one would be health and safety issues, which we're gonna be looking for in that. The health and safety is traffic configuration. We have a problem, a safety problem with the traffic. We also have ADA requirements on some of the renovations in the facilities, and so those would be prime targets that we'd be looking for in regards to state revolving renovation fund. What does that mean? We are a sixty-nine percent, let's, let's make, make it simple. We are a seventy percent receiver of funds. The locals pick up thirty percent, so if it's a million dollars, we would receive seven-hundred thousand dollars as a grant. The three-hundred thousand dollars would be a zero percent interest, and we'd have ten years to pay it back, and the locals would have to pick that up. So that's what, it's a good program. We've been very successful in the past. One of the districts has received, probably in the past, about six-point-five million dollars of it, and so, and we've done a lot of renovations to our facilities with that type of money, so I'm glad they replenished it, but it's, it's a good program, and I think it's, it's with due diligence and our responsibility, again, that we should apply for these monies before we, you know, exhaust all possibilities of state monies before we go to the local taxpayers and say, you know, we need this, you know, in our facilities, and can you please accept that? So that's what-
Is the source of that state money entirely from the state of Maine?
Yes. Yep, entirely from the main department of education. Yep. Any questions on the state revolving renovation funds?
Does it care? Does it receive that amount? Like, does it hurt our chances?
Oh, we, no.
Okay.
It does not. No. We still have the, oops, we still have the possibility of receiving that money. But we only can receive up to one million dollars per building. Okay?
As that comes back up, Ema touched on it quickly, but we'd be, they're looking at priority one applications. There's three priorities. They're only looking at priority one applications, giving them the limited amount of funds they have right now. So those are specifically for safety requirements for ADA compliance.
And you have a copy of, yeah, you have a copy of the application itself in your void packet, and that's what it exactly, the patch you're looking for.
So the, the application will be very specific, detailing the safety compliance issues for the site work we have laid out, and also the ADA compliance items related to the site work as well, as well as the building improvement.
We're all set with that page, that timeline. Okay, go ahead.
So the, the second option we're looking at is applying for a state-funded major capital project. So that would be the same process you went through with the Hammond Academy project. So this would be much more involved than the, the site work, just the site work we're gonna be walking through here shortly. This would be looking at full, either a full building renovation or a brand-new building. Again, we'd be making applications for both Weatherby and McGrath, so two, two applications. SD completed already, already met with the building committee. Submit state revolving renovation loan applications for both schools for September thirtieth. That'll still be happening. Open enrollment for DOE major capital improvement projects is anticipation of fall 2016. Nothing's been ironed out for this yet, but this is, there's been some discussions, and there's this possibility that we'll be rolling this out, so we wanna make sure we're kinda prepared for that. If that does move forward in fall 2016, there'd be a ranking of applications in June 2017. The state'll be going through that. In between that 2017, when the state's ranking projects, assuming the projects are ranked highly enough to get, to kinda get you on that funded portion of the list, in that timeframe, before you get out to referendum, which we projected to be out in November 2018, you'd be looking at a few, a few options. I'm not gonna get into all the details, but the state has this very long flow chart of twenty-one steps involved in a major capital project. Some of the initial ones upfront are designer selection, you have to do a full new versus renovation analysis, site selection, even though more likely you wanna keep it on the campus, the state would still require you to look at different sites, state board of education site approval, be meeting with state board to get that approval for the, for the site for the school, education specifications, working through a concept design, and then a final state board of education concept approval, before you could get out to a local referendum, which again, assuming we get the statement that's forward in fall 2016, we're projecting could happen around November 2018. Putting into start-up design, again, getting through design development and, and construction documents through the winter of 2019, out to bid summer 2020 with the anticipation of a, a brand-new project, a new building or highly renovated building in summer of 2022.
So totally different track, totally different concept. The renovation fund is basically looking at the health and safety areas. This would be a full-fledged project, where it would address not only building deficiencies, but it would also address educational program needs. Examples, we have three portables there. You know, that would displace the portables, put those programs in this new facility. We're using the stage at McGrath School for guidance and special ed. We're using, we have no art and music in the McGrath School, and so what, and you know what? We don't know what that will look like. We don't have a clue what that'll look like because of these steps that we have to take. Totally different process. This is the first list that's come out since oh-five, oh-six, which is great. I think we should take, you know, advantage of that and try it out and see where we go. So, but again, this would be a, a total project, including not only traffic, but also including buildings. And no, could combine both buildings, could raise McGrath down or whatever, all these ideas would come out, and the public would be definitely involved, like they were in the high school, where we had these charrettes Friday nights and Saturday mornings, and get their input as to where we would go with that. So, but we gotta apply for it and see where we fall.
So acceptance by November 2018 is best-case scenario.
I, okay.
We're looking at five years past that, maybe?
I, you know, that's a good point. These are really, these are, we think that's gonna happen, you know, this could be maybe fall of, fall of seventeen. I don't know. But these are, I think, this is what usually customarily the dates fall under, so this could be June of nineteen. We hired the architect in November of two thousand, in two thousand and six for that high school project, and it ended in two thousand and twelve. So-
He's, that's a great question. Matter of fact, there's some projects right now that have been currently put on hold by the governor.
Well, right.
And Sanford High School Vocational School, matter of fact, should've been started two years ago, and is now just starting to initiate the process, because the governor's held those money. Getting back to Scott and Jason's dialogue earlier tonight, the, the governor's basically frozen school construction money for almost eighteen months now. Newport, down the road here, twenty-five miles, should be, Mike, and you're breaking ground, they haven't even had the referendum yet. So we, we don't know what that date would be. That's a great question.
Yeah, no idea. No idea. So we're all set with the two timelines we're looking at.
School construction and school renovation.
So now we're gonna go with the-
Yep, this is an overview of the campus as it sits today, just to orient yourself. Two oh-twos up here, and, you know, Route one A, and here's the Weatherby-Grath area that we're concentrating on at the moment. Okay, next slide. So zooming in a little bit for the area photo on the existing facility or facilities, coming in from Route one, you have the drop-off loop in front of Weatherby there, and then cars continue up, and I think a lot of what parents do will park and walk across and bring their children into the school. The buses come along the back, drop off kids, half go down to this school, the other half go into this school, the buses continue on and park right out here, again, mixing with pedestrians and students coming into the school. So that's currently how it sits. A few items to note. The pavement that you see here, as well as the gravel, I sort of looked at all of that. We're looking at about two-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand square feet of paved or pavement or gravel, and that is roughly a hundred-and-twenty-nine parking spaces plus the buses. So that's just what this is looking like at the moment. The drop-off loop here, it's, it's rough, because there's parking on this side, but if you started here and went around to there, you could roughly fit about fifteen cars. So just for perspective, that's what the existing facility looks like. So if you go to the next slide. This is the proposed. So what we have done is, we've kept the, the split entry-exit, two lanes out, one left, one right, and the drive will bring you all the way in and loop here between the two schools. So one designated drop-off loop for both schools. Actually, I'm sorry, you'll be coming in this way and looping that way. That way, the traffic never has to cross itself. That particular drop-off loop, depending on the size car, you're at least seventeen, possibly twenty cars in that loop. So you're getting roughly the same size as the existing drop-off loop, maybe a little bigger. We have designated drop-offs in front of both schools where a car can pull over. The curb will be flush for ADA access. There'll be bollards protecting the pedestrians from the cars as they drive through there. The rest of this will be a raised curb, protecting the vehicles from going in the pedestrian way. If you so choose to park and walk your children in, we have designated parking all along this day, but the walkway will come out and across behind all the traffic, so there will no longer be any of that intermixing of pedestrians and vehicles.
Would there be fences to keep people from cutting? Or would, or would there be armed guards?
Uh, no, no. What we will do is make this a very attractive route, and this route will not be as attractive, and I think it'll just make sense. So there's additional parking down here. Couple things to point out. The buses and the bus office no longer out front. We've now moved those back here into this parking area. The shed back there will have some renovations, make sure that the bus office can be accommodated. We have the same number of parking spaces for the buses, as well as we've provided a few additional spaces, and there's some parking out here for the bus drivers themselves, so they have somewhere to park when they come in and get in the buses. The other thing, there is a memorial tree right out front here, in front of the Weatherby School. We were able to maintain that tree, as well as some other vegetation, so that's unaffected in this particular proposed layout. The pavement that you see here, and that, when I'm comparing the pavement, it's basically everything that you see here is within our project site. That's actually two-hundred-and-nine thousand square feet, so that's less, that's about thirteen thousand square feet less of a paved area, whether it's gravel or pavement, but we actually are getting two-hundred-and-forty-nine parking spaces, so that's an additional one-hundred-and-ten parking spaces. So we're using this pavement way more efficiently than what's currently on the site. The other thing to note is, you may have seen some of the depressions out there existing, catching stormwater and treating it. We're only treating about 15% of all of that surface runoff from the parked areas, the cars. In this condition, we're able to capture 95% of that, so we've really increased the treatment of the stormwater, which helps us both with the environment and for permitting with the state. A few items, there's going to be some renovations that occur to these schools, Mike's going to get into that, including we're proposing a walkway that's covered for drop-off purposes. Mike, again, will talk about that in just a second. You may know in the existing scenario, there's very little for sidewalk within this limit. There's the one route out to Route 1A. In this scenario, we have sidewalk that goes around the entire school. It makes a loop around both schools, completely inside of any of the vehicle traffic. That loop is about an eight-tenth of a mile, I'm sorry, four fifths of a, no, that is, that's an eight-tenth of a mile sidewalk loop that you could walk. And I know not only for students, but community members come up, they use the campus itself, walking, riding bikes, so I think that's a great benefit. Buses are going to be around the back here. We can stack eight buses parked between these two schools if they so choose to use it in that, in that manner. Right now, they queue up down the hill, one comes up, loads, moves on, and that's how they sort of drop off and pick up at the moment. So the buses will come in, do what they have to do, and they can then park, and they never intermix with the vehicles and the pedestrians out front. So that's completely separate now, whereas before, if you recall, it was mixing. The, the road requires us to come around back, we scoot just past the playground, the playground, four fifths of that playground remains intact. And the spacing of the playground equipment, we believe we can still maintain all the playground equipment in that particular playground area. We've developed a few additional areas of green space, and one in particular, between the two schools, we were able to push that hillside and get a little more flat area for potential playgrounds in the future that could be dedicated for that school, should we choose to go that direction. The entire site will be upgraded with site lighting. If you've ever paid attention out there, there's not a whole lot of site lighting. There's also one route of electric that comes across the front. It powers two lights and it goes to the, I'm sorry, the bus office there. That will be completely removed as we're able to do all the site lighting with underground wires. So as you come in, I think that view of the school will be a lot, a lot better, as well as the site lighting. And of course, we can incorporate some speed bumps just to keep traffic at a slower pace for safety reasons. But again, we have a drop-off in the back here for the buses. Those will both be now ADA accessible routes from the buses into each of those schools, as well as out front. We will now have ADA accessibility based on changing some of the grades out there. We started to talk with different groups. Maine DEP, the Department of Environmental Protection, we wanted to get their initial thoughts on this. Their biggest concern as it relates to permitting is stormwater and stormwater runoff, and as I mentioned before, we're able to capture and treat 95% of this additional, or not additional, but new impervious area. We spoke with the Maine DOT. We have this existing driveway entrance. They think it works really well, it has great site distance, it seems to work really well now. The only comment they had was new flashing beacons for that crosswalk there, which seems to get used regularly. They also wanted us to possibly remove some of the additional crosswalks that are not in use like they may have been at one time when Old Maine was in use across the street. So they believe that's maybe confused some drivers, and they're now becoming numb to the flashing beacon. So if we concentrated at that one crossing with new updated signage, that'll make it safer for the community. So if you flip to the next screen real quick, this is what I'm talking about with flashing beacon. There's two sides on either side of the road. You can press a button and this flashing beacon alerts the drivers that someone's trying to cross at that crosswalk. So up here, you can see solar tower, that's how that light is actually working, and it only stays on for about 10 seconds, and it goes off until the next person comes and pushes that button. All right.
Okay. Any questions on, now, this is, and I know, I know you've seen this maybe, maybe for the first time, this has been numerous discussions and meetings in regards to input and what we think, and again, this is a schematic design, this is not totally etched in stone, it needs a little bit of speaking about, we think this, this is what is going to...
Yeah, I guess, yeah, if I was going to add, basically, we needed to come up with a big picture and make sure it would work, and when it does work, what does that cost? Just so we know where we stand as a ballpark figure. Of course, this, this plan is subject to change, and it probably will change just as we work our way through some of these additional meetings and as we go through permitting process, it always does. So, but this gives us a good idea of where we could go and what that might cost.
And again, we'd be using it for support documentation for, for applications to the state as well.
And the other thing, I guess, real quick, is that this was initially developed, taking into account the ADA and the safety portion of this, but should we find ourselves receiving that capital improvement, we feel this sets us up really well to be able to do that project as well with this being the basis for that design, so.
Yeah, that's one of the things that, that kind of we gloss over. The reason we spent so much time and effort, we didn't just put pavement where the buses are, is because we don't want to spend money putting pavement down and then dig it back up when we realize, you know what, McGrath's not, not getting the job done, we need a new building. So we're looking at like, what, 20,000 feet, 10-year, 20-year, 30-year plan, because if you look just next week, you know, you miss a lot. So we're looking at the big picture.
Yeah, the thought being that whatever setup for the site here isn't going to prevent our getting in the way of, of any potential work that could happen on either of these two buildings. The other piece with the site is making sure we're stubbing utilities so that any improvements that are happening on there, we got utilities there prepped and ready to go for, for any renovations, our, our new building.
So are we talking about approving both projects, or option A or option B? If we go for the full, like, buildings and all, we do that without doing this on?
We'll, we'll get to the end.
Okay. I've already looked at a little bit.
The end. You're all excited, yeah.
I looked at the very, at last page.
Yeah, and you look at our money.
Before you get to the last page, it's all very preliminary. We're not asking for a chat.
Ready?
Yeah, so, so that canopy that was referenced earlier, for the, for the drop-off loop, similar canopy was just done over at Brewer, here's that canopy, if you want to drive by and kind of get an idea.
So show them where the canopy is.
So that's this canopy that's sitting up at the air, that would be off the, the parent drop-off loop, so it does give you some layer of protection outside of the buildings for both the, during, during drop-off in the morning and then pick up in the afternoon.
And lighting.
And lighting, okay. So to get into some of the, the building improvements that would happen as a part of this, really, the improvements at McGrath are actually pretty straightforward. Again, so this is McGrath sitting here, the bus drive would be coming off this way here.
Let's show them the big picture first.
Yep. So here's McGrath, you have the buses coming in. We're looking at a new entrance point right here for the students coming off the bus so they can get directly into the building. So what we're looking at is pretty much a new vestibule. What the vestibule does, allows for is, is a number of things. First and foremost is it gives you a covered way to get in, but the biggest part is, is the security aspect of it. It gives you an opportunity to have some lockdown, some visual separation. At the same time, you can also set it for buzzer access, you can have video piece so the office, main office can monitor that piece. And then there's secondary benefits, as in it gives you an opportunity for, for dirt and things to be tracked off of people's shoes before then they're coming onto the gym floor. So setting up a small vestibule there with the potential for a cooler pad for the, for the kitchen, cooler, freezer for that expansion as well. A little bit more renovation work at Weatherby.
So let's get the big picture.
Yep. So Weatherby's layout, again, the bus is coming around through here, this is the new bus entrance point. Moving the main entrance, the administrative suite to this end of the building, so it's by the car drop-off loop. The administrative offices are currently over here, so I've been moving that administrative piece to this end of the building. So starting with the smaller ones, this would be a bus entry point. Primary of the work at, at this end is, is rating that out, there's steps out there writing us, we actually bring the grade up as part of the ADA compliance issues, that'd be an accurate entrance, no longer steps at that entrance. We'd be doing a similar aspect of a ramp out here, that's not fully compliant, but we'd actually be raising that up so grades, we get accurate entrance coming in. And then we have two options we've been reviewing for, for layout of the administrative offices. So administrative offices currently sit right here, we relocating them to classroom space here. The thought process began, like, setting up a, a new lockdown vestibule for a security point of view. So if someone come into a vestibule space, you have direct observation from the main office, setting up a, a main office area, a principal's office, ADA compliant toilet facility up in the main office, and then also a small waiting area as well. Basically, you're taking up what amounts to be a classroom bank on this end. Nice thing about being on this end gives you very good supervision of the drop-off loop outside here, and again, setting up for that supervision coming in off, off the main entrance. What's happening with the administrative offices here, and we've since had more conversations at the last meeting, but the way that we're planning for actually gutting this out for guidance, but talking about guidance may be able to use the space as it currently sits. So it'd be actually minimal, very minimal work at the current administrative offices, we could probably just turn that over to guidance the way it is. And there's a small partition in one of the old classrooms up here, so opening that back up, so classroom space that's displaced here has an opportunity to relocate inside the building footprint.
So before we look, before we look at this page, Tina Boone and Kristen Briggs, with input from her staff, this, the respective staffs gave significant, great, great ideas for us, and then, and any, any other... All set?
We have a lot of feedback, and it's really changed a lot since our first meeting, kind of, to get a good about vestibules.
Kristen? Okay. Here we go.
So I want to start out, we had a, a third-party cost estimator doing the, the estimating work on our, on our site, and then as far as the, what we're looking at for renovation costs for the building, we were getting square foot values from the state for what they're seeing for current projects that are under construction right now. So that's where we were getting our, we see the building construction line item, we have renovation line item for the work in McGrath, Weatherby estimate for the covered walkway, and then the bus office renovation. Again, those are looking at square foot cost numbers for those line items. And then the site improvement line items, you can see the next two line items, down two and three for the work both onsite and offsite, and then a contingency, right now we're carrying a 5% of a bid contingency for that out, that out of construction. So that type A in the construction cost would cost about $3.7 million. The next segment down here is the B, the B section of the budget form, administrative costs and any just reserves, that's where we're looking at any potential furniture. Playground equipment, we're carrying a line item for that. Obviously, there's no money for land purchase, there's some legal adjectives that have to happen as far as the bidding process. Potential for construction exhalation out in 2017. It may not be as high as 4.3%, but we've seen that as kind of a rule in the past work, but it may not be that high. And then a construction contingency line, about 5%, getting to this kind of administrative cost and reserve piece of about $440,000. And then the fees and services for the designer, services that's straight from the BGS, the state, state fee table, reimbursable expenses, permits, what we have to do for topo survey, geotech investigations, any what we have to do for any, any, any DEP permitting, structural testing inspections, anticipated for the scope right now, we don't anticipate anything. And then what we have for any, any of thing on the owner's side for a clerk of the works, maybe, maybe email will come back into that, that work.
That's his plan, right?
There you go.
That was one of the sincere laughing.
And that's where we can then come and get to a total budget of about $4.6 million. We would use the, if we were able to achieve for the revolving renovation funds, the $2 million, $1 million for each building, that of course would kind of cut that form of 4.6 down by that $2 million.
I'm, I'm really puzzled because a really big chunk of all this is right there in A2, site improvement, $2.8 million. I mean, that's the biggest single chunk of all this, and is there a, a quick explanation of that?
Well, that's just the biggest chunk of the work.
That's all the, the site improvements you saw there, that's all of that work. Just for comparison, if you were to try and take the existing pavement that's there right now, go over the gravel pavement and just do the pavement, it's about half of that cost, so.
Just repaving?
Yeah, right, right. Depending on how, what you, how you attacked it, I mean, if you did a quick skim overlay, it might be less, but if you're talking about putting in a full pavement and say where the parking is and the buses and stuff, that would be a little more expensive, so. That's just what construction costs are running at the moment.
But to that point, John, one thing that did come on the last meeting with me, that Thomas Green, that Carter brought up, is, and I think a lot of the thing about is, this is sitting in Hampton, and we're for community, you know, school district. And he brought up some good points of things that had come up in Winterport, and just like you said, you look at it and you say, wow, this is a pretty, pretty decent price tag, kind of like putting a penthouse in one of them or what have you.
Call for, Florida call, mobile line.
A bit of music and my acceptance speech. Well done. But one thing I did want to say is, I know that, I know that one of the things we've gotten is feedback, you think about the budget, you think about everything, is communication. So, you know, I'd be more than happy to Newburgh, Winterport, Frankfurt, what have you, if you have town councilors, members that are concerned about it. Obviously, the horse isn't in the barn, we're still just kind of looking at things, but we'd more than happy to sit down, ask big questions, feedback, what have you, to, to make sure, is there everybody's concerns that they have? And make sure that we set ourselves up for success, whatever avenue we end up going to, so I appreciate you bringing the feedback in the last meeting, but you've got to be thinking about, we do have to think bigger than just this area that we're working on because it does impact our full community, so.
We did the same thing, Jason, in the late 90s when we did the, at that time, a $6 million renovation to Smith School.
Smith Elementary School.
You know, it was, it was obviously in Winterport, we had to go to Newburgh and Hamden, look at the benefit of the RSH, or SAD.
So Jason, as, and Scott, and Tony, and Rob, building committee members, if we're looking at the minutes, our recommendation, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the, the building committee would like to move forward with option one and submit an SRF application for each building, and then also at the same time, the two trains going down, different tracks, also, when available, the major capital construction application for each building, when the application is available from the main department of education. I think it's, again, I think it's, it's, it's a responsible act for us to do to see where we would fall, how we would fall. So that's the recommendation, to move forward with that and apply to the application, see where we, where it goes.
And before we motion it, one thing I did want to add, that we had a great conversation on was, can you imagine Matt Medor in a music room? Can you imagine actual art? When you, when you think about, like, I know when I was, when we came in and watched AP Physics, being in a physics class, in a class built for physics is just amazing, and when you think about these two buildings, one of the things they don't have, like, when you think about the kids covered, I mean, watching kids walk from McGrath down to take their music and stuff like that, and so when we think about, you might say, why are we doing both projects? Well, we're doing what we feel needs to be done, which is part of the bigger plan, but the final cap on it would be, would we have an elementary school sitting here that would have everything that you'd think that we want to have, and, and I know Kristen gets tired of me saying this, but, you know, I've spent some time down at Smith School, the facility that they have at Smith School is just fantastic for what they would be able to do and to be able to give that same, same type of facility here, so a much bigger picture to, to what we're really trying to do, we're not just going out and trying to build another school, there is that purpose that if we could bring this, and you're going to have a K through five school that can actually handle, you know, the rigors that we need for education today, it's not in a building, it's a building, what was it, like 1950, and then we get like a 1968, 1970?
I was thinking of that very point. When I came here in 1992, here's the picture. We had 10 portables in the parking lot next to Weatherby, at the time was a middle school.
Yeah.
And we had that 24 years ago, and we're still using the same facility today. And it doesn't jive for what you're saying.
Be awesome, we've got on a capital, major capital list, so it'd be really awesome.
Yeah.
Do you have a feeling of which one we think would be approved for?
Well, I think we have, you know, I'm optimistic. I'm very optimistic. I think we, I think one of our buildings could probably fall on the major capital list, probably, I'm leaning more towards McGrath. And what happened in Brewer, now one school got on the list and they knocked them all down, they built one. So, and WBRC was involved in that project. So, I, I, I'm an optimistic person, so I'd say yes, I'd say yes. We'll get some state revolving renovation money.
So if we did get on the list for the capital improvement, how much of that funds would cover everything for option one?
Everything.
So we don't want, so we're not talking about doing option one if we're going to try to get on the capital project, is that right?
What we want to do is do due diligence to look at option one and also option two at the same time, see where we fall on both of them.
Apply for both, not necessarily accept.
Because you have 18 months, if you get option one, you have 18 months to spend it. And if we want to push it a little further, we could. So by that time, we'll know if we're on the list or not.
Okay, then we would, we would send that option one back.
Correct.
Yeah, so if you look at the timelines, you can see where a total approval of the state renovation loan in the spring of 2017 is almost a year out from now.
Yeah.
Those other ones would be there, and we're not even looking to break ground until spring of 2018, so we're almost two years out. So that gives plenty of time, as Emo said, but we want to have this in place so that if we don't get on the other one, at least we're doing what we can do for our, so.
And the goal of the committee, we got a plan. And the goal of the committee, we got a plan. We have a plan for these facilities. They have a plan, and it needs to be addressed.
All right.
So, I'm, on behalf of the building committee, we're looking for a motion, a second, to move forward with both applications.
I think a motion that we approve for the, the recommendation to move forward on the drop-off loop.
Second.
Motion, second. Any additional questions? All in favor? Any available?
You wanna...
Extension, I'm guessing?
Extension.
Yeah.
Another good job, that's a lot of work there as well.
Yes, the building committee did a lot of work on this.
Paul, I think very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good job.
Okay, we've gotta set some meeting dates.
We have policy next week, of course, we have a get going tomorrow night. And...
Ad hoc substance, this is the full line?
Yes, thank you. Oh, yes. Your ed committee, obviously, is the seventh, our board meeting, next board meeting is the seventh of September. You need a athletic or building?
I don't think so. Uh, no, we're in, we're in the middle of everything right now, so no, right now, probably in September timeframe, probably September meeting, we'll set some meetings up, definitely.
For the, for the finance committee, try to, we talked about meet monthly, so try to go in July, and then through communication, probably wasn't the best way to get to go about it. Do we wanna try for August, or do we wanna wait until...
I would push it off to September.
September?
Yeah, we're in, because Matt, we're still paying bills from sixteen. We have our, all our state reports due by August. Our orders are coming in.
That was my next question, when is that all getting taken care of?
So, let's get that taken care of, and we move forward from there.
Yeah, so, what I was thinking was, because with, of course, with your announcement, once we get all that stuff done, we can start reviewing it just to make sure that we all are on board as the big transition.
And we, and really, we need the numbers from them to move forward.
I'll invite you all to breakfast the twenty-fifth of August. That's our management day, where we have all faculty and staff here at Hammond Academy from seven-thirty to eight-thirty. Then at eight-thirty, we move into formal presentations to about ten, and all the faculty and staff go back to their respective schools. But if you can come to breakfast, seven-thirty to eight-thirty, on Thursday, the twenty-fifth of August, right here, you're more than welcome.